Mr. Zabli, roll call.
Mrs. Denny?
Here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Essler?
Here.
Ms. Hilfried?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Seaside?
Here.
Mr. Tinsley?
Here.
Mr. Armour?
All right. Number two on the agenda is the minutes and monthly reports. 2.01 is your approval of minutes. I'm asking for motions from 2.01A through 2.018. Motion to approve the minutes of the special board meetings, the reord meeting, as well as the board meeting in Niagara, November. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listed. This motion is to approve the invoice listed for November and December 2021 through January 2022. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasurer's report. Mrs. Powell?
As of November 30th, 2021, Pendelco's balance was $53,426,369. During December 2021, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $3,193,771. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $9,346,635. As of December 31st, 2021, Pendelco's current balance is $47,273,505. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for December 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. This motion is to approve the budget transfer report for November and December 2021 through January 2025. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. We're going to get tonight the student representatives' report to the board. And we're going to have four on the agenda, which is the DCIU report.
There's no report yet.
With that, we'll hand off to Dr. Steinoff and the other members of the management board.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Step over here again so I'm not in the way of our presentation board. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for those of you who are in attendance tonight and have an interest in Pendelco. I'll have a couple more comments when we get to the sun or items for board information, but it's important, I think every January, for us to recognize at your own meeting that the community, the administrators, the teachers, the support staff, our kids, thank you for the commitment that school board directors are making at the 500 school districts around the state of Pennsylvania, 4,500 unpaid volunteers that are committed to improving public education. And I want to thank this board for their continued commitment, for their time, and for their stewardship. I know the amount of time that you put in outside of these two meetings, official meetings every month, and it is very significant, whether it's reading all of my emails, reading all of our reports, reading all of the backup, responding to constituent emails, attending school events. It is quite a commitment that I think folks would not understand until you're actually on the board. Opportunities to meet our candidates, all those things that you do, and I want to thank you for that. We'll circle back to a little more information on that as well, under items for board information. I want to mention to our school board, we're really pleased and I appreciate the fact that the board unanimously appointed Mr. John Paul Roscoe as the next Sun Valley High School principal. John Paul is just really thrilled, can't wait to begin his time at the high school. He'll be visiting our faculty and visiting the school this coming week for an initial meet and greet, for him to get a chance to talk to his office staff, our sister principals, the kids, but he just can't wait to get started. And we, as I mentioned in the executive session, I'm sorry, in the emergency session when he was approved, during that special session meeting, I indicated that we had a very large and very impressive group of people who applied for that position. And we were concerned, because the high school principal position is a hard position to fill, and we were extremely impressed in out of the 23 folks who applied time and time and time again, Mr. Roscoe suppressed all of us, and we can't wait to start, and we can't wait to have him here. In the meantime, Dr. Linda Giles and her team continue to do a great job making sure that this is not a lost year for the students, even amid some of the pandemic challenges. Tonight, we're recommending to fill another administrative vacancy with Mr. Krista Palladino, who comes, in fact, I'm sorry, I did mention for those in the audience, for Mr. Roscoe's. We are hiring him out of the School District of Philadelphia, immense amount of experiences, really things that we knew he would immediately be able to translate and bring right into Sun Valley with his focus on improving academics, school culture, school community, and school pride. Tonight, we're recommending that we fill the position at Pennell Elementary with Mrs. Krista Palladino, who I was happy to say is actually here, was required to attend, but welcomed to Pendelco. Krista is a very treasured administrator in the Marlboro-Luton School District, had previous experience as a teacher and administrator in the Yawar Darby School District. Again, what we saw was a leader who hits all the seams, caring, committed, compassionate, very, an excellent communicator, an individual who is not looking to just come for a position and kind of just have a cup of coffee and move on, but someone who really created and was able to share a vision for making an elementary school, first and foremost, a fun and a safe place for kids to come, whether smiles from kids and they can't wait to get back in school, a place where there are foundational skills to develop, a place where there can be school-wide projects, and just a community, a community and a commitment and collaboration that happens between the school staff and the folks at home that entrust the kids' care to us. So we're thrilled to recommend Krista to take over the Pennell Elementary principal position. We want to thank Dr. Mary for the work that she's done as an own principal there. Congratulations to, of four of our Sun Valley football players were selected to participate in the 44th Annual Delaware County Hero Bowl. On the Hero Scholarship Fund provides scholarships for the children of first responders who have died in the line of duty. It's a great event. We've got some great guys, some seniors there who are going to represent Sun Valley, Andrew, Ryan, Tom, and Kevin, really pleased to see that they will recognize and will represent Sun Valley in the Hero Bowl for 2022. Between now and our next meeting, National School Counseling Week will be held February 7th through February 11th, and we want to honor our counselors and thank them ahead of time. We'll have a video feature that will explore the tools and the skills that our counselors use. Remember, we had just a few years, the Pennsylvania State Counselor, I think our entire team of counselors are fantastic, and they're really focusing very much this year on the importance of social emotional support and the challenges that face students coming out of a global pandemic, which have been pretty substantial. You know, we had students who had to learn from home and it didn't work well for them. We had students who struggled with the isolation that came with that, they just want life to get back to normal, like all of us. And our counselors have been critical, critically important in making sure the kids are grounded and they recognize that they're not going to miss out on the experiences that they should have in high school. Really been wonderful work by all of our counselors, KJ and Claude. Very excited to mention the information on this slide. For those of you who follow the district and regional fires by the PMEA Association may know that in prior years, if a high school had one or two students selected for that distinction, that was a nice number. Typically, there's just a couple students that are able to participate in district and regional course recognition. Pendelco has seen impressive, really steady growth. More and more students are auditioning and are chosen to represent Sun Valley at these festivals. We had 12 students audition for districts, and a record time, nine students are selected to participate in a District 12 Coral Program at Unionville High School next week. That's the most we've had since 2018. More impressive, out of those who auditioned, another record, five students were selected for Regional Six Course Festival as well, and those students will have the opportunity to audition for the state festival in April. So the arts have always been alive and well in our district, and now we're seeing objective third-party assessment of the skills of these students coming out of our programs. I want to address the climate weather, particularly since this is on the minds of everybody. You know, when a storm comes during the weekend, I think the superintendents feel like the kids do when it comes during the weekdays. As excited as kids are when it snows on a weekday, we're excited when it snows during the weekend. And it looks like we might have a heavy storm coming in Friday into Saturday. But let me just mention that Pendelco has used, at this point, two of our four inclement weather days. We have two more to use if necessary. Afterwards, we may utilize up to five flexible instruction days without having to make up any lost time at the end of the school year. We would notify parents in advance, and once we reach that point, let them know what the expectations for flexible instruction days would be, very similar to the experiences that students had last year during our virtual Wednesday schedules, very sympathetic to the situation of having to be on a screen all day long. Tonight, the board's going to address our proposed 2022-2023 calendar, some key highlights. We're going to honor a traditional back-to-school method in Pendelco, which is the first day of school, which is the Day Fong Labor Day. Our calendar includes 183 scheduled days for students, 191 for teasing staff. Last day for students will be Thursday, June 15th. I do intend to submit a request to PDE again next year for five flexible instruction days, which again gives us that ability to not have to make up snow days if we have an excessive winter. Our winter break begins December 24th, which is a Saturday, so that could be a challenging week, particularly for our early elementary teachers, but they'll do a great job with it. Spring break begins April 3rd, and we still intend and contemplate having the Sun Valley 2023 commencement as the first Tuesday in June, as we have had in many of the recent years. American Rescue Plan, ESR funds, the total grant allocation that Pendelco received in our ESR funds, all the third part, which is known as the American Rescue Plan, RESR funds, was $2.2 million for Pendelco. That is a large amount of money to any individual. Over the course of a multi-year period, it's not as large as it initially feels, but we are still pleased to have that. That is a tiny, tiny fraction of the $4.5 billion that were issued from the federal government to the state, to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our distribution for this third part came for that $2.2 million dollar number. One of the things I want to clarify, and I'll continue to share with the board, are the ways that we can use that money. The allowable uses for these funds over the next two years are to ensure continuity of services, preparedness measures, training, health protocols, safe in-person schooling during a pandemic, facilities or grounds upgrades, social emotional learning, trauma sensitive schools, health wellness, staff improvement, staff support and training, academic recovery and acceleration, systemic equity for family partnerships. There are some broad areas that we addressed inside our survey. The money that we receive cannot be used to lower taxes, and it cannot be used to pay for costs that we otherwise would have had. So we can't say, well, these five teachers that we've had at this grade level, next year we'll pay for their salaries with the money. Cancel plant existing costs. It's all new expenditures to address learning loss, mental health needs, staff training, security, preparedness, health and safety issues. So in the survey that we sent out about two weeks ago, and we'll send one more reminder, it's very impressive, we got 717 responses, that's a very nice number. Eighty percent of those responses came from parents. We asked them specifically how they would rate the importance of expanding the money in certain areas, and the highest ranked area was personalized learning. Personalized learning had the highest rating from one to five, with 56% of the parents responding or the teachers responding saying that's the most important area. Not surprising, because that's what we learned when we did a similar survey on our comprehensive plan, and that's why personalized and individualized learning, not just teaching everyone in the class the same concept, making sure we're differentiating instruction and addressing individual needs. Respondents to our survey had that as number one. Mental health needs of students, number two. Educational technology was number three. Individual tutoring was fourth, with 35% of the respondents ranking that as most important. PPE and cleaning supplies, then followed by staff training before and after school and summer school. I'm not surprised that summer school and before and after school programs are ranked well. Parents say, thank you for the opportunity, but my kids are in school a lot, and our other aspects of being a whole child, then also adding another one, two hours of schooling onto the day. So we see limited interest in after-school programs or before-school programs and even summer school. Some parents feel it's just time for their kids to be kids and have a break, but we will offer that for some parents who have said, my child's struggling, my child is behind. Provided we have the staffing, we will provide those offerings. So that's the latest update on ESR. We'll continue to talk about that in our study session as Mr. Zabli begins to craft, you know, the final aspects of the grant application that we have to submit in about a month and a half. And on the agenda tonight also is a commitment regarding the Act One Index. For our community, it's important to remind the community that 4.1% is the cap that has been established for Pendelco, and we are saying tonight, administration is comfortable supporting the board's early commitment to not exceed the 4.1% cap, although we are permitted to do it. A number of districts, even some neighboring districts routinely utilize the exceptions to go above that taxing cap, and since I have been here, we have not done that. We have not taken advantage of those exceptions because we respect the challenge that property taxes create on some of our residents. The 4.1% is Pendelco's Act One Index for next year, and what we are saying is that we will not exceed that number, and as we get increased revenue numbers over the next couple months, we will be able to draft our proposed budget and come back to the board with the more informed ideas of whether or not we will still need to recommend a 4.1% increase or potentially some lower number. We don't even have the proposed state subsidies yet for next year, and the state subsidies make up almost a third of our budget. That's the information for today and for this month. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Steinoff, for your report. Next is the announcement for the public. In accordance with the Act 48, the Sunshine Law, the board met executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personal issues, as well as we met last night, executive session to discuss litigation and personal issues. Comments by members of the board? Just two quick, two quick comments from myself. What is Mr. Armour, was I able to make it through previously personal engagement? So that's why I'm sitting here, as well as kind of piggybacking off of what Dr. Steinoff said, we are very excited to have two, two new principals, quite frankly, two out of six with our district this, the fifth that we have in the school year. Any other comments by members of the board? Items for board information and discussion. First is board recognition.
Yes, thank you. Again, just to elaborate on the information, the slide that was shared for school board director recognition month, I do want to thank this board and honor their commitment and the time that the school board directors volunteer on behalf of our community. January is designated as school director recognition month. Work of the public servants that we have at this table tonight is vital for the success of our students and our schools. Board service is unpaid, and school directors are often motivated to pursue the role out of a desire and an affinity with kids. Majority of school directors indicated the primary reason for serving is to give back to the community and to contribute to the well-being of students and the educational outcomes of everyone who is in our school. About 42% of school directors indicate that they served the district that they once attended as a student. School directors are locally elected officials. They focus on improving the townships and the boroughs in which they live, to our fellow neighbors, leaders, coworkers, parents, and friends, and we recognize that school directors, on average, dedicate 14 hours each month to board business without paying, and we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Steinoff. And the second handle for board information is the Sun Valley Course Selection Guide.
Yes, we put a copy in the packet, the Course Selection Guide. We're very pleased, you know, with some of the improvements and enhancements to that guide. We continue to ensure that we're trying to meet a wide range of needs and interests. Board members that have questions on the guide, certainly contact, I would initially start with Dr. Kamenka. Any other comments, Dr. Kamenka, in regards to the creation of the guide? The board should be aware.
Yeah, sure. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Giles for jumping in and getting it together and the timeline, because we know we want students to start registering for classes as soon as we can, but I would add that we're going to expand our opportunities for the career and technical education program into the Delaware County Community College. We've been, we have not been talking to them prior to COVID. When COVID hit, it hit a buck, but we've had some good conversations around expanding that technology, technical education programs. So we have two, two programs, one for the carpentry program that leads to a carpentry license after successful completion of the program, and then also a HVAC program that also can potentially lead for a student who completes that program for licensing there as well. So two good options, definitely a high demand in the employment area for post-secondary students. So it's definitely a great opportunity for kids, so we're going to, next month, we have lined up the individual from DCC to come out and talk to the school board at a study session to hear more information about those two programs specifically. We're lining up a parent and student information session, one for parents, and then we're going to try to bring them into, meet with students who are seriously interested in a program at some point, so we're trying to really push out the communication, and counselors have been, we've been working with them to get them to understand and be aware of the program, so, because those are the ones that are going to be helping advertise and create students. So we're excited for the opportunity for kids, and you know, it's something that would be just like kind of a beginning point when we talk about dual credit, dual enrollment with the Pennell College.
Next on the agenda is comments by members of the public. This first session, members of the public is doing a bit, 15 minutes, and then get it on its own.
I don't know, I can't hear him.
I can't, I can't understand what you're saying.
It's public comment, you want to speak differently, speak at state name, your address.
Would I go to podium or just right here?
For items on the agenda, sir. There's a second public comment after the items on the agenda are covered. The first public item, comments section has for items on the agenda.
And then you'll have another one for just general. Gotcha.
And respectfully, you have these big podium, the name and then the address as well.
James Salvy, 2130 Spring House Lane.
Is this, is this related to the agenda?
Yeah, for the ESR.
If you want to, this guy could be on the hotline.
Oh, I guess I better get through.
Hi, James Salvy, 2130 Spring House Lane, Aston, Pennsylvania, 190104, 014. The ESR disbursements from the federal government, which are 2.1 million for Pendelco, and our budget is $53 million. Now, the budget will be, we anticipate a budget that will be close to $70 million one year. $2.2 million in RESR free monies can be expended over the next two years.
Okay. And I understood that there's, there's a lot of different uses for this money, but we understood probably, it was not conveyed very well to us, that a lot of this was supposed to go to mechanical aspects in the district, such as ventilation and other things to deal directly with the spread of a pandemic. Okay? And, and it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of issues that came out of this before that was even mentioned, that I don't know what that has to do with the pandemic. I understand mental health issues, stuff like that, but then there were, there were, you know, five, six other things that were mentioned that I just don't see as being necessary, you know, from my, from my little worldly view of Pendelco, that has anything to do with the pandemic. You know, it seems to me that to make our schools healthier to a pandemic, you know, you should try to eradicate any chance of a student getting the virus in the school, which would be, you know, they pointed to HVAC systems and, and mechanical and cleaning and whatnot, but, you know, social programs and stuff like that, I don't see where that's going with, with the pandemic, you know? Somebody can explain that to me a little better. Thank you.
Sure. One thing I'll mention, support of the HVAC possibility, some districts are using their share of ESR funds to make improvements, capital improvements, with respect to air quality and HVAC systems. So there are some districts, particularly with much older schools, that they've recognized that this kind of large bevy of new dollars enables them to make changes, add air conditioning, improvements to air quality, HVAC, large capital projects they couldn't afford previously. In Pendelco's situation, we're at the tail end of a decade-long process of improving all of our schools. So most of the HVAC systems that we have, most of the mechanical systems that we have in our schools are new or newly renovated. So that, I don't anticipate any large sums in Pendelco being recommended for use to improve or replace our HVAC systems, only because they're so new. When we look at the renovation at Sun Valley, when we look at the new Coburn Elementary, some of the improvements, the renovation that we did, the Parkside and Aston, most of our school facilities really have updated HVAC systems already. There are some districts that are choosing to use that money, and it is an allowable use to really take advantage of this one-time opportunity to improve really old schools. In terms of the social emotional impact, what was very clear was that there was a large amount of mental health needs for students who may have suffered from, through the pandemic, and really missed out on the socialization that they should have had growing up and shoring through the school system. School districts are allowed to use some funds to address those kind of mental health needs, if that seemed to be a true important piece. Now, in terms of, again, the HVAC and the mechanical part, we just did not identify large needs because we had already made that, made those upgrades with our own local dollars over the last 10 years. Thank you. You're welcome.
Joanne Bambozy, 40 Norman Street. My public comment actually is to address your statement on your question of how does that have to do with the funds that we would get from ESR would help with the other social activities?
Sorry, just for the record, for Ms. Claus.
Oh, you're right. I apologize. I am in the wrong, I am in the wrong time.
No worries. Oh, no, if you, if you want to announce, it's okay. If you're already up at the podium, if we just want to give your name and your address just for, for our record as well.
Sure, Joanne Bambo, Joanne Bambo. Push the button. Oh.
Just so you know, it's a hotline.
Joanne Bambozy, 40 Norman Street. Sorry. And I'll make my comment at the end.
Oh, you can, you're up there.
Finish it?
Yeah.
Sorry. I just want to say, Dr. Shaw, thank you for addressing the HVAC things, because I was thinking the same thing when you asked your question, and I do agree and understand that the concern would be making sure that we have the best technology for our health. technology for our health to be in the buildings. And I would say that I recognize in being here from elementary now into high school, that I've seen the schools and the district have done that. And to say, what does it have to do with it? My son, who's been depressed for two years, and I knock on his door every day to make sure that he's okay, because he's been isolated for two years, and a kid who hasn't been able to play sports. So I do support the district in spending that money, focusing on the education and physical and mental health of students, of administrators, staff. That has been the biggest impact to our children and to our communities, has been the mental health aspect. Thank you. Sorry for the wrong time.
No, no, it's all.
Good job.
Any other additional comments? It would have to be.
Do you want to go back up there and address that?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Get your, get your steps.
James Salvi, twenty-one thirty Spring House Lane, Aston, Pennsylvania, one nine oh, one four. I also have a son that's sitting home in the bedroom right now on TikTok, and that's the way it's been for two years, and I've watched his mental health go down. Luckily for me, I have the privilege of being a parent for the second time because of heroin My family's seen the worst of the worst. This is nothing to us, this pandemic. We're, we're getting by it, we're getting through it, but I can understand how people facing this for the first time, this, this kind of crisis, would be very concerned. My wife and I got COVID last Christmas Day at my daughter's house. Twelve people, somebody showed up with COVID, we all got it. Me and her were sick. Friend of mine's a COVID nurse at Lankin, and I called her up, what do I do? She said, take this, D three, vitamin C, duh da 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 da. Wasn't that bad? My grandson, he was home quarantined with us for fourteen days, never coughed, never coughed once. Okay, so we have to, we have to be aware of common sense in this, you know, to move forward tonight. You know, there's, there's no, no politics in this. Okay, we're not here to discuss Republican, Democrat, or this, that, or the other. We're here to find a solution for our kids, to keep them safe mentally, physically, and emotionally. Thank you.
Seeing other, seeing no other comment but member of the public, we're going to go right into items for board action. The first we'll do for agenda items, page two, ten point zero one Personnel Professional, continues on page three, page four, as well as page five, page six as well, seven, and concludes, airway on page eight. This references the Pendelco Budget Twenty-One, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, Act Nine Three Plans, the PD E A Agreement, the PD E S P A Agreement, the PD S S P A Agreement, and the school code, the PA School Code, Section One-One Zero Eight-B. It is the administrative recommendation to approve all personal items as presented. Do I have this motion?
No.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, the board's going to be utilizing a consent agenda to approve the items ten point zero three through ten point one four, however, we're going to be omitting ten point one one and ten point one two from the consent agenda.
And ten point one five.
Oh, I didn't even, if we call the consent agenda, it's just ten one, ten point three, ten point four.
Oh, sorry.
Are you calling it up? First, I would like to ask if any board member wished to call any items from the consent agenda?
What is state cover? I'm sorry.
I'm asking the board if any board members wish to remove them.
I can't hear from Askel, I'm sorry.
If not, I need a motion, again, to approve those items, ten point zero three through ten point one four, omitting ten one one and ten one two for the agenda. All contract preparations solicited bids are subject to review and approval upon solicitor. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to read two agenda items. The first one is ten point one one. It is, this is for the assistant, this motion is to approve the employment agreement between Dr. Eric Kamenka, Assistant Superintendent, the Pendelco School Directorship for the term July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, as presented. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? And again, Dr. Kamenka, thank you for your, and I know we talked a little bit last week tonight, I appreciate you wanting to stay and all the great work you've done. All those in favor? opposed? Motion passes. Next team.
I'd just say thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
I want to thank, Mr. Tinsley, thank you, and the rest of the school board, I want to thank you as well. November will be my tenth year, and it's been a great, Pendelco's been a great place for me to carry out my passion to educate the whole child, students, something I've always, you know, wanted to do, and when I went through my education, it's been a great place to carry out the past ten years, so I'm really looking forward to the years to come, so I just want to thank you all. And all the parents who do the high up work we do as well.
Next on the agenda, ten point one two. It is the, this motion is to approve the employment agreement through Mr. Eric Zedley, the Business Administrator, the Pendelco School Director, from July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, as presented. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Eric, I just read the same, what I read to you last week as well.
Happy fun.
As work commander, you know, Mrs. Marshall for so long, and I really appreciate you for wanting to stay as well. Happy as well.
Thank you, the board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Ten point one five, Mr. Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Ten point one five, Pendel Principal. Motion to appoint Krista Palladino as Pendel Elementary Principal, effective on or before March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at an annual salary of one hundred and seventeen thousand, pending satisfactory completion of a pre-employment paperwork. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Welcome.
Questions, questions or comments? I'll say, I know we've looked a big lot, and I know I'll be working with you with half of you too, I was at the three little ones I've done, but thank you.
Best of luck with Nas.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have one more agenda item, ten point one six. This is the motion to approve the Memorandums of Agreement or MOU related to, MOA, sorry, between the Pendelco Board of School Directors and the Pendelco Education Association as presented. I'd like to pause for a second, Dr. Saadoff, if you want to do some more commentary.
Sure. There are, we've requested, recommended that the board approve two Memorandums of Agreement with the Pendelco Education Association. One is impacting the scheduling that our elementary teachers have to follow in the morning. During the pandemic, that has changed the amount of time that our staff have to supervise students, and some of them during the course of the pandemic, because of the inability to have large groups of students in the gymnasium at one time, some students have to enter into a classroom, for instance, earlier than they ordinarily would, and our staff have stepped up and handled that. We want to acknowledge, though, that that is not a precedent, precedential situation, which is acknowledging a memorandum of understanding that that's only for this period of time, no additional compensation, but it's an acknowledgement to the staff and the hard work that they're doing. The other item just acknowledges that we will have one hundred and eighty-three days scheduled for students in the calendar for next year, and since that is a change in the contract language by one day, we wanted to make sure that we're honoring the contract. Again, no change in compensation across to that, just ensuring that our agreement between our Teachers Association and the administration of the school board is actually sound and being followed. So we're recommending that those two Memorandums of Understanding be approved. Thank you.
So, Mr. Tinsley, there have been some changes to the Sunshine Law that require when matters like that are added to the agenda. It's my understanding that those matters just came together recently, they didn't make the agenda. So the procedure for the board, the first motion is a motion to add those items to the agenda, along with the explanation that they were just, came to fruition today, after significant discussion prior, but they came to their conclusion today. So the first motion would be for the board to add those to the agenda, both items, and then that would be a separate vote on each item. Mr. Tinsley, thank you.
So, so ten, so ten point one six, the first motion is to, we're asking if we, I'm asking for the motion to the end of the agenda to approve the Memorandums of Agreement between the Pendelco School Board Directors and Pendelco, and Pendelco Education Association as presented.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
So now you would vote on those two motions? You can vote on them as a consent together, or you can vote on them separately? Sorry.
Again, one more time, kind of like when we did the rework. Ten point one six, this motion is to approve the Memorandums of Agreement between the Pendelco Board of School Directors and the Pendelco Education, as presented. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven on the agenda is comment by members of the public.
What? This is just in general?
This is public comment, it's not a, yeah, right, general.
James Salvi, twenty-one thirty Spring House Lane, Aston, Pennsylvania. Regarding the masks, I, to me personally, think it's ridiculous. We've been two years through this. Those of us wearing these things, these are useless. Okay, absolutely useless. I spent thirty years working at General Chemical Corporation to claim on Delaware. We made sulfuric acid, sodium metabisulfate. The N ninety-five masks are the only mask that I would ever wear. I, I was wearing them when I was twenty years old, through thirty years of being down there, and they are called dust masks. That's what they're for, they're for dust. They're, they're not for particulates under a certain diameter. For them, we wore canister masks, and you had different canisters for different particulates. And then, when you got into the dangerous stuff, the very small things, we wore SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus. I've been trained in that for thirty years. Okay, that's the stuff that'll kill you. These masks, I, I don't know why we are still going through this. We said we, we had updated systems. We just went over this tonight, updated HVAC systems throughout our school district. Children do not get this virus. I was on, I was on news.com last night, looked up the averages and the percentages, and they compiled, do I have to hold this button down or let it go? The fatality rate for children zero through nine is zero-point-zero, unless they had several underlying conditions. Okay, this, this virus isn't killing them, they don't, they're not catching it, they're not transmitting it. Ten through twenty, same rate. Only until you get to, to people that are forty and over, does the, the fatality rate come into play, you know, seriously. And, and in COVID, it's only at a one-point-two percent of people that get the disease will actually die from the disease. I don't know why we're, we're just, we're putting our children through this. I mean, we, we can't hear you, Mr. Tinsley, we, we can't understand what you're saying with the mask. I'm, I'm not being smart, I'm just letting you know, you know, there were some comments that we didn't know what you were saying. You know, how can the children know? How can they, how can they know a facial expression? And they're sitting there breathing through these all day long. It's unhealthy. It's very unhealthy. Now, I'm the owner of Paramount House. They're recovery houses for addicts and alcoholics. And under me, I, I have fifty men and women that I'm responsible for through a pandemic. When this started out in twenty-twenty, I had my first house, I had ten, ten men, and, and we were quarantined, and I'm like, what do I do? What if somebody dies in my house? We used the common sense, common sense approach, no masks, you know, we had to be quarantined, but I told guys, go outside and walk, get fresh air. You know, the cops are ready to lock you up, go out and get fresh air, which is the same thing the COVID nurse, my, my customer, who was a COVID nurse, told me when I had COVID. Take, every two hours, walk down to the, walk down to the corner, and I did it. And it wa, COVID wasn't that bad for me. My wife, she, she didn't take the, the D three and that, the things, she had a little tougher time, but she came through. But we haven't had any COVID in our houses. That, that's fifty human beings in five different houses now. And we're looking at this new variant that is very weak. Nobody's dying from this, and I think we really have to take a stand here and, and go back to normal. I mean, we, we can't, we can't live in fear, we just can't, because our kids, they, their fear level, if our fear level, if our fear level is this high, theirs is up here when they see a parent that's scared, when they see school administrators and teachers that are scared. I mean, we're Americans, man, we're, we're not supposed to live like this. So I would suggest that, you know, come February, and, and, you know, when the springtime hits and it's time to go outside, and let, let's take the masks off these kids, because the statistics, and that's the science, show you exactly what's going on. You know, unless you're old or you have underlying conditions. And, and that's the fault of, of the CDC and everybody else, for the last two years been silent about what these underlying conditions are. And I think this pandemic is a wake-up call to all human beings. We got to start taking care of ourselves. We have to start eating right. We have to get rid of the cigarettes and, and the lifestyle changes that we have to make. We have to start living better lifestyles in this country and, and throughout the world, because the next pandemic comes along, might not be as easy to get by as this one. You, you might need to have a healthy lifestyle to survive the next one, but it is a wake-up call. Thank you.
Hi, Megan Kelly, I'm three-twenty, First River Road. Dr. Saadoff, I just wanted to thank you for meeting in person, January fourteenth. In regards to the masking, I have spoken to a few of the school board members privately, and they've all said that they don't like them, but they also voted for them last time. So I just wanted to touch base with Dr. Saadoff about the email that I sent earlier to you in response to the email that you sent back to me today. When are you meeting with Dr. David Rubin again?
Typically, this is a comment section, so if you can give us your comments, and then questions that I can answer, I'll answer it to you.
Okay, so regarding the mental health for the students that you guys were talking about, do you have any idea what you could do for my daughter about, you know, what I said in the email today, about her having a hard time with the masking, because that's a huge problem?
Yeah, I may need to contact, the last email you sent me in the afternoon, I saw a comment I haven't read.
Okay.
From the one I sent earlier today, in terms of the ability for superintendents to get information. to get information from the medical experts, the Dr. Rubin from CHOP, sometimes Dr. Brennan from Penn Medicine will join us in weekly meetings. At the height of the pandemic, we heard from more health experts. When the case counts drop and cases start to moderate, we don't meet as often. But they'll generally will provide some guidance to superintendents. Will ask for some justification, some explanation on what is the information and the science behind the recommendations. We ask for the information that they get from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And we also convey some of our challenges and the mitigations that school districts are asked to implement. Anytime we have a chance to talk to the public health experts and say, we understand your guidance. We want you to understand how they impact staff and students, it's nice to have that two-way conversation.
I agree. I think that's a freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nicole Boyers, 108 East Cheltenham Road. And that's, my daughter's at Parkside Elementary. I think there's a lot, especially with this. It's kind of like that we hear stuff on the news. We get information from the CDC and then we see what we see in front of our eyes in reality and how much this pandemic has changed. My daughter just turned 11 and she did get COVID. So the kids are getting it, but they're really not getting sick. I mean, she had fever for 24 hours. We did go and get PCR tests. I was sick as a dog for 48 hours, and that was it. I think I've had hangovers worse than that. I've had the flu for a week worse than that. I think a lot of us here probably went through COVID right before Christmas. And we're lucky. The timing of Christmas break and, and a lot of us getting it, you know, going to church, you know, Christmas Eve kind of timed it up. And we wore it out. One of the discrepancies I see, though, is with like testing out. And kids have been exposed. So you're not going to test the kids that are vaccinated. But someone like my daughter, who has natural immunity, she'd be under stricter regulations to test or such. Well, she already had it. She has natural immunity. And it seems like that's not recognized. So I would hope that when the, these mitigation standards are put into play, that some consideration is given that, according to my daughter, all the kids in her class, except two that she knows of, already had it. So it seemed to make a nice big broad sweep through at least this school. I don't know, you know, I would assume all the schools and the whole community is kind of going through this because that's what I'm hearing, that some natural immunity be given a little more consideration. Second of all, we all hear the United Kingdom is dropping everything. We're supposed to be the leaders of the free world, not the UK. But it seems they're taking the lead. So I hope that the votes that were put on, I know I spoke back in October and you guys voted optional. You know, the parental choice for masking. And then the governor kind of ripped the rug out from underneath all you guys in a lot of school districts. So I hope that when you guys do speak, you go back to that optional agreement. Yes, there's some parents that are concerned about it. And it's nice to keep that consistency within their families if that's what they want to do for their children, especially because of certain needs, asthma and such, and they would rather keep their children masked. But for kids like mine who need that socialness and, you know, it's really hard to be in, be in a gym class separated and all they're doing is something with a scarf, she said. You know, not real gym class, real physical activity that's necessary. But yet, you know, she's breaking out right here from wearing these filthy masks that if it's keeping the bacteria in, or really, what good is it doing? I really hope you guys give it some consideration and go back to parental option. Because a lot of school districts are jealous of us, you know, and wish that, you know, they had that like you guys have done for us. Thank you.
Just, I want to be aware. I, I know, to be honest with you, you've been hurt. Everyone has. And I'm being, I'm being perfectly honest with you. And in my head, I had script and going over with Mr. Armour last night and so on. To be perfectly honest with you, I'm just as excited. I need to, I need to at least say it is that when he even brought up, Dr. Kimmick brought up about how we're trying to have a partnership with the Delaware County Community College at the Sun Valley. I'm just as excited. We locked in two more, I'm saying locked in, two more administrators for another five years. Two, two administrators, two principals out of six. And we have one here tonight. Just as happy, we have the Sun Valley Girls Lacrosse Pitch. That was on tonight, too. Brand new fitness equipment, senior work. So we're trying to, I want to say, normal. If that, if that kind of makes sense, you know, trying to get back. Hey, I was so excited when we used to have study sessions and it was just, really, it was the old, what's the old, the high school and lower level in, in high school going over, hey, we're looking to change the schedules or what about these textbooks? Or what about changing these curriculums, et cetera? That's what I want to go back to. I don't want to talk about this anymore. So what I will tell you is that as a party of nine, respectfully, with the, with the cabinet, we are looking. We're not, we're not dumb. You know what I mean? As far as we're, we're looking. We're tracking all the trends. We're tracking all our neighboring school districts. Absolutely. Just like I know Mrs. Ellis, Mrs. Ellis that in Sun Valley, who went tonight wrestling.
They did. Just watching the championship. You stole my thunder, Kevin.
There you go. I don't care. My hand was shaking. My hand was shaking. I didn't know if it was because I was nervous or because you're blowing out my phone.
Sorry, I was watching. I can't lie. Very exciting, but team out defeated.
But to be perfectly honest with you, our expectation is the, is the community monitor. If you, I'm just as happy as far as, not that this is less of a concern, if that makes sense. I'm just as excited for what we voted on that 16 agenda items. But absolutely, I'm not, we're not stupid. There's, I'm even nervous that we're going to wrestling this weekend. And it's controversial for other school districts in Montgomery County, Chester County, and so on. So yeah, absolutely, we're, we're looking into it. We want, we want to get, no matter what, I think, I think we're all in agreement in here. I haven't heard a single person in two years say, no, I want to keep my, my students unsafe and virtual. So that's exactly what we want. We want in-school and we want safe. So absolutely, we're going to be looking into this in a couple of weeks. So respectfully, Mr. Salvi, so three, like the three, four, five, and probably another, another one about it possibly, so seven. All seven comments, respectfully, have been about the mask tonight. We are looking into it. And I'm, I don't want you to think of that. We're not, you're not being hurt. Okay? If that, if that makes any sense for anyone in this room on whether you're pro-mask, you want to call it that, or anti-mask, or whatever. So I'm sorry. I don't want to.
Do I have to hold it?
It should be just a gentle touch. And once it's hot.
Joanne Bambozy, 40 Norman Street. And I do not have anything to say about masks. Actually, just wanted to make a few comments. Dr. Salmah and I have exchanged some emails about school safety and whatnot. I'm not trying to rehash things that you've addressed in the sense of safety concerns. There's a lot of chaos in December, beginning, with some fights and lockdown drills and whatnot. So I had sent you a follow-up of some bullet points and some things that were my concern. You answered some of them. Not necessarily 100% directly on some of them. So some of my thoughts were asked. I wanted to explain the reasoning of asking what vendor we were using for the technology in regards to the communication. Because we know that there's been breakdowns. My concern is that there's been a few. I can think of definitely two. I feel like there was three since September. There might have been one towards the end of last school year, academic year. So my reasoning and logic of asking you, who's the vendor is? And what is their backup plan? What is their disaster recovery plan? Like, as a customer of this vendor, we should know what your disaster recovery plan is. And if it fails, what is our remediation? We're paying you X amount of dollars for you to deliver a service. You can't deliver it. What is our remediation? That's, it's thought-provoking, those things for the Board. And, you know, when we're paying for vendors, these are the kind of things that we expect back. If there's been three to four failures in a 12-month period, something is wrong with that vendor. I do understand that there is a cloud outage. Things that are out of the vendor's control, 100%, that's logical, it's understandable. But having four failures in a 12-month span seems to be more than just something that would be out of the vendor's control. So that's the thought-provoking reasoning for asking those. And then are we, as a district, going back to our vendor that we're paying probably quite a few thousand, a hundred thousand dollars to, to do? There was, I know a lot of, we have some disagreement on how the message was delivered in regards to the using of social media to really get information. The kids were scared. They were panicked parents. Where I can tell you, I got zero information from social media. I actually was contacted hours after everything and all the dust settled. And my child happened to not be at school that day. So I didn't have that, thankfully, panicked reaction and have to deal with that. But what was frustrating was the lack of communication after, after that. You addressed that. If I recall, several years ago, there was an incident that had nothing to do with the school that caused the school to go on lockdown because it was a community safety issue. We got text messages. So I would hope that you're looking into that again. Why are we not getting that? So if it was supposed to be a stay in place, you probably wouldn't have done a text message. But if it was a legit lockdown, I would expect that the community is getting those, at least the school community is getting a text alert the same way as if it was the PD that had to send the community a text alert. The PD would obviously go to the home community. School would go to the school community. I get that. So just verbally asking and acknowledging that, is that something that's still being used? And if not, what would it take to get it back in place? The, the other question I had was about, you said who, who, and I know this is not an answer question timeframe, but you answered me who does the audits for the safety drills? That's, that's, that is a third party, right? That's not, I, I don't recall. It was in my emails.
Now, the safety drills or safety assessments are conducted by the Auditor General's Office as part of the district's audit.
Okay.
Their findings are presented to, for the superintendent and local police departments. And not necessarily because of the nature of their findings, a public audit. So there are some questions related to safety that would be subject to right to know and are some that are not subject, obviously, because you don't want a bad actor to find out information they shouldn't find out. But yeah, so when we had our last audit, they looked into some of the things that you asked about in terms of the safety audit. And that's a formal level. Then there's the more informal level, which internal assessments and those type of things will happen as well. Could be facilities making sure that certain items are working. You know, after that incident, Mr. Dottie was there with his staff to make sure that all the locks work. So then you have those kind of internal assessments. But then there are external audits that also happen as well. But they'll check to make sure, well, I can't mention what they checked, but they'll go through the process as a governmental entity to make sure that we're doing the things the school code and the regulations require us to do.
Oh, thank you. And I'd like to say that there's, there is a general feel of distrust with the Board. We do feel like a lot of times, maybe not specifically the Board, the district is a whole, I, I myself feel that way. Members of the community that I've asked and inquired and kind of polled, I'd like to ask a couple of friends and get their, I mean, it does seem like the school's not telling us stuff. There is stuff going on that we hear back from our parent, our children. And my own child said that he did not feel safe there multiple times. So I do think that there is a level of, and I do think that the pandemic is involved in this in regards to the social, emotional, and mental health of things. There is a level of just, you could cut the tension with a knife, with a butter knife, in, in the school. And I feel like that's amongst the students. And I'm actually happy to see a principal coming in from Philly. Maybe he can kind of take his mindset out of sedate life and help us with some of that stuff that's going on, with the fighting and just in general, just dealing with a lot of emotional, social stuff. So I want to say that I feel like the Board does really need to listen to the children more. I don't think the schools are really being transparent with you, especially at the high school. So I do, I think we need to listen to the kids more. Definitely. That was, thank you for your time.
Any other comment from the other Board?
I was going to say, Roger, the wrestling team wants my the chestlock championship. Also, thank you to the facilities groups